All right, I guess we'll begin the regularly scheduled meeting of August 28, 2018. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Ziegler?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Beagle?
Here.
Councilmember Gottschall?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Leader is excused this evening. Councilmember Resnick?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda? Any additions? Mr. Brown?
Yes, I do have one addition this evening, Your Honor. I'm looking to add a new business site that your discretion is the where related to authorizing mayor and city clerk to sign an executed restrictive covenant on the property at 29311 South Wixom Road formerly known as the Fort Wixom Plant.
I'd be able to number four then.
Yes, if you would like that.
Have you got, did you pass something out or are you going to do that at the time?
I can. I sent the email and asked if anybody wanted a print. I can provide it. I've got, we can have Cheryl make a couple quick if you'd like them. Would you like them?
I would.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm okay.
Okay, we did have a couple of them. We do have one available, so. About 26 feet.
Yeah. That's why I didn't run it off.
Not a problem.
All right. Any changes from up here? Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular seated council meeting of August 14, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So move, part?
Any discussion? Changes, corrections, additions? A motion is second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Correspondence, there is none. First call of the public. I'll read the rules for the call of the public. The public shall address the council during the call of the public, which shall be included in the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call of the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by majority vote of council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence and shall state the reason for addressing the council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Anybody wishing to speak to the council this evening on any agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close the first call of the public. Next item on the agenda is the city managers' reports. There is one. It's the department monthly report, departmental monthly report of July 2018. Any questions, comments? Okay. Next item on the agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
Support?
I have a motion and a second. I have a request from Mr. Resnick that there is a Resnick that is mentioned in the, which item is it, Tom?
Consent agenda for the easement.
Easement. And it's a Resnick and it's not related. I just, he asked me to make that comment, so I wanted to make sure I got that on the record. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, first item under new business, recommendation to approve a land division request for the address identified as 2345 Fairbury, Wixom, Michigan by NG Group Homes LLC within the Platted subdivision known as Hickory Hill/Rolene subdivision.
So move, support?
Discussion?
Would you like to come up and make a presentation? I'd never heard Rolene subdivision either.
It is the legal Platted name.
I've lived here a while. It's like, what is that? A while?
Yes, that is the legal Platted. So on August 7, we did receive a parcel split division application from NG, which stands for Nick and George, who are here this evening. They purchased the property at a bank auction in June and it was their desire to split the property into three lots for building single-family homes. Gentlemen, did you want to?
And if I can, just as a little bit more background, there's people that have watched regular council meetings on a regular basis, I should say, are familiar with 2345 Fairbury. It was a property that was demolished after a long period of time with lots of processes that were in place. It was unfortunate that it had to be demolished and the land cleared because of what happened there. We were thinking possibly that the outcome could be not just one, but multiple new residential homes being built there, and this is what this request pertains to, and it is a split into three, which would allow three new single-family homes to be built on the property because it was a large lot.
So pray. Okay. Gentlemen, would you like to come up and introduce yourselves?
Hello, good evening, everyone. I hope everybody is doing fine. First of all, I appreciate opportunity to come in front of you to ask for this land split. We purchased this property sometime in June, actually it's on his name right now, but we purchased it on behalf of NG Group Homes LLC. We created this company about eight years ago. We started buying bank-owned properties and fix them up and flip them. Now, pretty much that market has dried up. We still actively look for those kind of homes, but about four, five years ago, we started looking for lots and land we can maybe demolish home or buy a lot and split it and stuff like that. We have purchased one house like that in Rochester Hills last year. We split it in half and we put two homes. They were about 2,200 colonial's. We had bought one house in Bloomfield Hills. We demolished their house and we put 6,000 square feet house and a lot. We sold that one. We bought some lots last year in Greenock Township Hidden Lake. We have put seven homes out there and we're pretty much completing the project right now. I seen this piece of property on Fairbury on auction, started at like 35,000. We bet and bet and finally got it about less than 70,000 something. And when we looked, we came and looked at the property, we seen that the size is 235 feet wide by 120. We figured out probably this is ideal for three homes. Basically, each front lot would be 78.25 approximately by 120, which is got a pretty good size for that home being like, maybe we're planning to do 18 to 2,200 square feet houses.
Mr. Resnick?
How do you pronounce your name?
George Vouli.
George?
Yeah.
The appears, the 78.25, is that about the size of, or width of lots eight and nine in the drawing? It looks about, it would be equal in size to the lots directly to the right of it in our sketch.
Yes, they're, those are actually a little bit smaller. Those are right around 70.
70, okay. So these are actually, will be eight feet larger on the width. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Beagle?
Thanks. These are going to be single-family homes?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I just, with the, your title NG Group Homes, I didn't know if they were going to be a group home or?
No, 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 no. We just named it NG Group Nick and George.
Okay.
Group Homes LLC.
Okay.
So no group homes, not anytime soon anyway. Maybe, maybe one day in future retirement homes. All right, thanks. You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Welcome to Neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is recommendation to authorize participation in the state of Michigan MyDeal purchasing program for the purchase of a Toolcat 5600 G Series with an 84-inch greater attachment from Bobcat of Lansing at a cost of $60,916.47 after trade-in of the 2005 Toolcat. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Support? A motion and a second. Tim?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is a, this is a purchase or a replacement for our Toolcat that we currently have. We have two Toolcats at the DPW and this is the older of the two. Looking at it just this week again, it's, it's really starting to rust out and we are in need of it and it's part of our budgeting process to purchase these. So we went to the MyDeal purchase to get the Toolcat. As you know, we have several implements that we use and all of the implements that we have on site are operational, so we didn't opt for any replacements of those at this time. We are opting for a new, a new purchase for the Toolcat and that would be for a crater. And what we'll use that for is kind of like a small bulldozer for, for maintaining the fields at Gilbert Willis and we would also like to work on the small Little League field over at Gunner Matella. And we'll also use this for the trail systems to kind of crown the trails, to improve those. So that's, that's what the purchase is. It is a MyDeal purchase, which is a state bid process that is being applied. If you have, I'll be open.
Mr. Resnick? Let me just comment for the record that this line item was budgeted in the 2018-2019 to amount of $60,000. So it was discussed at length back in April.
Mr. Smiley?
You said something, I wasn't, I just, it was a clarification. It's not like the accessories, the attachments that are on the existing one, those are transferable? They're going to be?
They're transferable.
Yes. Except for you're adding one, the grater.
A new one, yeah.
Okay.
And that's why we, that's why we purchased the identical model. That's the neat thing about the Toolcat is there are, there are plenty of different implements that we can use and the existing one that we're keeping is, is useful for that and, you know, this, this one here, the two series.
Those accessories?
Right.
Are like the bride tank, forklifts, dump rinder?
Correct. Those are all parts that we utilize with this.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Beagle? Thanks. Tim, what are, what are we getting for the trade-in cost on this? Are we getting more than what we could if we auctioned it off ourselves?
We, we feel that we are, yes. It's, it's roughly, I don't have that with.
Yeah, I don't see, it's not in the report.
I didn't put that in the report. If I recall right, it's about 7,000.
Okay.
It might be just a little less.
So better than what we could get?
I feel that, yes.
Okay. Mr. Vouli?
Thank you. Is there a separate built into that almost 61,000, is there a separate cost for the grater? Like what, is there a breakdown?
It was a breakdown and it's, and I should have included that. It's right around $9,000 for the grater piece.
Okay. Because I, when you explain the uses, like working on the baseball field, I've tried to look out what the actual part was and it looked like if you were going to be doing a lawn and needed to tear up the lawn to reseed, it might be a little rough for the actual dirt on the diamonds.
Yes.
I'm just, when we paved the trails after the work on the Little League field is done, what other kinds of uses do we have for it?
Well, the trail at Gilbert Willis, the mile, the mile trail that we used there was one of the intentions. It's not for the airline trail. We could, we could also use it at the Habitat. And, yeah, it's almost like a little mini, from what I can see of it, it's, it's like a mini bulldozer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, don't we use the Toolcat for plowing sidewalks?
We do, yes. And we have, we have a blade for that, but it's a flat blade that can't articulate back and forth and that's what this one will do.
Right. So, okay. But, so the only thing that's different is the actual tool attachment itself?
Correct. Yeah. Correct. Thank you. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is recommendation to waive the competitive bid process and accept the proposal to enter into a three-year lease agreement with Snetcamp Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Redford, Michigan for two replacement vehicles that were used by police detectives for a total not to exceed $22,616. Do I have a motion?
Move. Support?
Aye.
Aye, Mayor.
Want to tell us what we're doing here?
Sure. In 2015, many of you on the council allowed my predecessor to enter into an agreement with, it was Snetcamp at the time, to lease two Dodge Chargers, all wheel drive Dodge Chargers. We've been very satisfied with those Dodge Chargers. Our detective bureau, primarily our detectives have used those vehicles. I asked my staff to reach out to approximately seven different Chrysler Dodge dealerships just to make sure Snetcamp was still the favorable dealership and they were by far, by over $2,000 a year. I'm sorry, $2,000 over the life of the lease. Snetcamp was the leading dealership. The gentleman who takes care of us from Snetcamp, he's a Wixom resident, so he, he takes very good care of us. If, if the vehicle needs service, he'll, he'll come right to the police station, pick it up and take it to the dealership since he's living right here in town. So I guess I would just respectfully ask that you allow us to re-up on this lease with Snetcamp.
Any questions? Sure, Mr. Resnick?
So you've got all these seven responses from seven different dealerships for the same make, model, year vehicle. I'm just curious as to why it's not considered a competitive bid process?
Yeah, with the, with the formal bid process, you have to publicize it so that not just people that you're contacting can respond to it. It's an open bid process that other people could, could get involved with. I think that there's some reasons for why we went the way that we went on this. I think it just kind of fits with the way that auto dealerships do business in terms of, you know, soliciting a price on a specific vehicle and comparing that to what prices we can get from other, other dealerships as opposed to doing a formal bid process, which might be a little different and off the beaten path for your average dealership. So I didn't, we didn't see the utility in taking on the added administrative burden, the cost of publicizing things when we can do it through this quote process and come up with a pretty, pretty competitive bid process without actually being able to call it as such, so.
It's surprising how varied the lease prices were for the same vehicle.
Real quick here, you know, the prior lease on it was 292 per month and this one is sitting at just barely above that over, you know, two years later, so, well, three years later.
And I would note, Mr. Resnick, that, I don't know if you have my spreadsheet up there, but the Northland Chrysler Dodge dealership, they actually have the Michigan State Police bid, the state bid for, for the state police. And my assistant asked them what the likelihood, likelihood would be of us getting in on that state police bid and they said no chance because we're not, it wouldn't be part of a patrol fleet. So when the state police gets the bid, they, they buy multiple and they turn them into police cars. That dealership said because we would only be leasing two, we would not be eligible to even get in on that bid, so.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the one that was added. It's the recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the executive restrictive covenant on the property located at 29311 South Wixom Road. Do I have a motion?
Move. Support?
Do you want to give us a little brief, very brief discussion?
Sure. So we started off with this and we originally were going to have it on the agenda for the normal agenda as opposed to doing it as an add-on at the time that we did. And there were some questions that came up in relation to some of the details related to city easements that were involved and we had to work through those. We weren't sure how long that was going to take and in the end it only was resolvable, if you will, today. So that's why we brought it to you this evening. This is a agreement between Ford Motor Company, the original owner, if you will, of the property and the successor owner, which recently just sold the property to Industrial Commercial Properties. That had kind of been a bone of contention between Ford and the successor buyer for some period of time where that buyer would not sign off on this restrictive covenant. That part of it broke loose just before the transaction to sell in April. It actually was signed by that party in March. Once that was done, it became appropriate for them to talk to the city about it because we have easements on the property as well as the International Transmission Company has easements on the property as well. That is now the time for us to take a look at it. It just basically acknowledges that we're aware of the fact for our purposes that this restrictive covenant limits the use of the property to non-residential uses. Basically, that's the only real impact on the areas where we have an easement and obviously we're not real estate developers or residential developers and that doesn't trouble us in the least. So we are just signing off acknowledging that we understand that that restrictive covenant is in place and was signed. So we're adding our signature to it this evening if you approve the action.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Resnick?
So as the property through ICP gets developed, Mr. Brown, they, each planned use will come before planning commission anyway, right? And they'll be looking at anything in terms of the restrictive covenants, correct?
Correct. It will have to be in compliance with that restrictive covenant language, which is what we want to see anyway. We're looking for industrial and commercial uses on that property. That would be our preference and I think that's obviously given their name, the preference for the current owner, Industrial Commercial Properties as well. So they weren't interested in really pursuing a residential development either, so I don't think it's going to be an issue for anybody.
Right. And it would be consistent with the zoning that's?
Correct.
There or a PUD if we were.
And that's the other thing, until this gets cleared, Ford can't close out this chapter of the property and until this chapter of the property gets closed out, the development wouldn't be able to proceed. So we're also kind of fostering or facilitating the ability to allow ICP to, to move on with redevelopment of the property.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion to authorize the mayor and city.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Very good. This is just within the confines of what they've included in the map or the description or the entire parcel altogether? Like the entire Ford property or just?
Yes, I suppose it would have been in place for the entire property. Right. For the entire property.
On the, on the map that's included, they have a dash circle kind of central to the entire parcel that says 7 point something acres restrictive covenant?
Yeah, there's two properties in there that are circled in that, that area. There's a 7.982 acre property and there's a 2.67 acre property. That section of the property, those circled areas are subject to even more stringent restrictions on what can be done there because of the nature of some contaminated soils in those areas. And that's the reason for the delay frankly, because Ford was saying that we had some easements in that area that we needed to sign off on. We disagreed and we came to an agreement that that's, that's in fact true, that we are not affected by those circled areas. We're only affected by the rest of the parcels restriction on residential development, not on those circled areas that are subject to some further restrictions. If you look at the language in the document, there's some additional language in there for those two smaller pieces of circled property that, that make it more difficult to do something on that site. And I had some concerns if we did have easements that were affected by that, we would be in a position of maybe having an issue with that because if we had a water main underneath there, we would potentially have an issue with working on that water main when there's contaminated soil present. So we had to work through those questions. We did work through those questions. We're not subject to those additional restrictions because the easements that we have are not in that area. The current easements that we have are not in that area.
Does this then apply to like where Menards and At Home and Duluth are then currently?
No. It's, it's the remainder of the property, the 182 acres, it's not related to the Menards property.
It talks about infrastructure and putting in like storm sewer drains and whatnot not being below groundwater, the measured groundwater level. I mean, what, is that pretty common or I know we don't have plans in front of us to develop, but I just want to make sure that there's not going to be?
Not in that, not in those restricted areas, no.
Just period in general. If we had a general piece of land, is there any chance that we're putting storm sewer drains below the ground, groundwater level?
There's, there's that potential that we could put storm drains below the groundwater level, but on this property, we, we do not have any.
There won't be a need for it?
Nope. No, because it'll be developed, it'll be developed around, around that property with that restrictive covenant in place.
Once this is executed by us and finalized, that's going to govern any developments that go there. So if anything that would be put in place would have to comply with the restrictions.
I understand that. I'm just trying to think ahead. Is it making it, is it making it more difficult to develop or undevelopable?
No.
Like do we have that kind of a measurement in there where groundwater level is X and it doesn't really make sense to?
The new purchaser, ICP, is well aware of the restrictive covenant and they've raised no concerns about what, what impact it's going to have on their ability to develop the property. They're aware of this restrictive covenant. They're aware that we're going to have to proceed in this fashion.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the executed restrictive covenant on the property located at 29311 South Wixom Road. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the second call of the public. I've indicated what the rules, the speaking public are already. If anybody wants me to repeat it, I'd gladly do it. Anybody like to come up and speak on anything on their mind this evening? It's somewhat relevant to city business. Seeing no one, I'll close the, the second call of the public. City managers comments. Mr. Brown?
Just what's contained in the city managers update. I don't have anything to add to it particularly this evening. The workaversaries there, if you will, the anniversaries of people starting employ with the city are there. There's various project updates that are included there, including what's happening at the parking lot, which is moving along pretty well and we're happy with the progress. We're not happy with some of the, some of the complications that have arisen. And I do want to make mention of one thing in addition to what's contained in the city managers update because I think it bears mentioning here at this public meeting. We had a odd occurrence with our project where a dump truck that was relieved of the containers of the truck was leaving the property and taking a left turn onto Pontiac Trail from Center Boulevard, made the bad decision to not lower the bed before he made that move and the bed caught on the street lights, traffic signals and street sign arm that was functioning for westbound Pontiac Trail, causing that to pivot and shift to a useless point of view where it's facing our parking lot. And in addition to that, it managed to wreck the wiring inside of the, of the pole as well. So the lights went dark, if you will, and they were no longer facing in the right direction. So we had a situation on our hands with, with safety concerns and a variety of other things going on there. And the road commission of Oakland County was very quick on the scene and took some action to make the initial situation much safer and instituting a blinking yellow light for Pontiac Trail in both directions as well as the blinking red coming out of Center Boulevard so that we wouldn't have an unfortunate additional collision there. And then after that with the electrical, we kind of anticipated that it was going to be a multiple day delay in getting those signals back up. Instead, the road commission was out today, this morning, and within hours had the signals and the street sign back in operation. And I felt that was an outstanding performance by the road commission of Oakland County and wanted to stay, say so publicly and express my appreciation to them. I sent them an email today saying the same that I CC'd to council and other people here at the city. But it was a very quick turnaround to a situation that was important for us and I wanted to say thank you to the road commission for that. We had it cleared much more quickly than we expected and that was great.
Thank you. Your description was much more colorful last night when you talked to me about it.
Yes. I don't doubt that it was.
All right. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Mr. Smiley?
Just that the kids went back to school today. I'm wishing that meant all the teachers a good 2018-2019 school year.
Mr. Resnick.
You know, the, with school back in session, I hope that people keep mindful of the TSI initiative and continue their slower drives on Loon Lake, Maple, and Charms. The, I'm going to really miss the concert series. Deanna, you and your team did a great job this year. Mother Nature helped, there was great weather, even though one day where it rained slightly, people are out there, packed out there with their umbrellas. Very, very good season, and the extension was welcomed by everybody, so I think we had two, two extra weeks this year, is that correct? Yeah. It's great, so hopefully next year we get as many corporate sponsorships for the same thing, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gatchel.
Thank you. Trying to finish my notes real quick.
Oh, I'm caught.
Don't worry. With the, the parking lot damage that's been going on, with the wiring getting torn up, and now this, is it the same contractor that was kind of responsible for both issues?
Well, I'm going to say that the first issue, basically, I can't blame them for at this point. Initially, I thought that I had a situation on our hands where it was their fault, but in point of fact, that's a private line of fiber optic cable that wasn't, wasn't, wasn't registered, if you will, back in the day when it was put in at City Hall with Ms. Dig, for example, it's not on a map, so it wasn't discovered, so I don't think that that was an error on their part. That was an error that kind of just existed from decades ago when the work was done in the first place. We're going to try to address that with Ms. Dig and make sure that it's notified, or they're notified, and it's, and it's current, and it's current in the maps that are used in the future, so hopefully we don't have a repeat of this occurrence. But that one, I won't blame them for. The second one, there's a subcontractor, more than likely that it was involved there, and they'll be responsible for any costs there. I'm sure we'll work out those details as we go through the project, but that was a little bit of sloppiness in my estimation.
Okay.
Try to be a little bit more colorful this time around.
Yeah. I wanted to echo Councilman Resnick's comments as well. I heard a lot of people, family, friends, family, that were at concert series, really enjoyed all the fan selections this year for the concerts. People they would go see at dinner clubs and whatnot as well, that they were familiar with as well, so they, they really appreciated that. And then, the last thing that's kind of been a thing sticking out to me, because I know when we're in campaign season, I always hear about all those signs out there and how annoying it is. We're now well past the election, so I'm wondering at what point we start collecting the, the leftovers that are still out at some street corners and vacant lots and whatnot, so.
Is it 60 days?
I think it, I was doing some research, and it was like 10. There's no-
I thought there was not a limit.
There's not a limit before, but after we're allowed to limit, and I believe we had something. If we don't, then I'd like to put that on the agenda at some point in the near future, but we have folks that didn't win that still have signs out, and it's, and I saw.
We did have some talk about that, in terms of what that deadline is and whether it has any weight, if you will. We can revisit it, as you say, we, what I, what I had planned to do originally was allow a period of time to elapse and then direct the DPW to collect them and have a fire sale, if you will. If anybody wants to come and collect a sign, feel free to do so, but in the meanwhile, if it doesn't get collected, we're going to toss it. So that's probably what we'll do in the long run.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School is open, be careful driving around. Other than that, everybody have a safe and happy Labor Day, and we'll see you next, this is the city council meeting. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I want to congratulate Amber at Morfitt for being selected the best aerobic studio by WDIV's Vote for the Best Contest. We've got several work anniversaries, I won't go through all of them, but just to highlight a couple. We've got our fire chief, Jeff Roberts, 26 years, and our own Kathy Buck, city clerk, celebrating seven years. Deanna, great job with you and your team on the concerts this year, got a lot of positive feedback for it, and the one big hit also this year was the Family Fun Zone, so put that in your notes for next year as probably going, and I would even like to see that continue on even longer throughout the night and throughout all the concerts too. And I did enjoy the bounce house, yes. And then, school is in session, so please be careful driving. And then last, we get these little newsletters from here at Valley Ambulance, and inside this week, one of our own firefighters, firefighter Dave Stewart, were presented with an achievement of excellence awards by the Oakland County Medical Control Authority for their actions on one of their calls. That's great, and these are the people that are out there training, that's why they train all the time, and they, they keep our residents safe, and we appreciate that and like to congratulate Dave. Thanks.
Thank you. I would just concur with everything my fellow council member said, and having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Support? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Call home.